Good evening. Nasty standing room, or standing room only crowd again, I appreciate that. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission for the municipality of Anchorage. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Dean? Mr. Ferguson?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Spring?
Here.
Mr. Strike?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Mr. Cange?
Here.
Mr. Spinelli?
Here.
Mr. Spohes may be late, thank you.
On that one. Do we have any minutes? Mr. Spring, will you please handle the disclosures?
Mr. Cange? Any disclosures?
No.
Mr. Strike?
Yes, on the consent agenda, on Resolution 2015-032, 33, 34, 35, and 36, I was not present and will not be voting.
Mr. Spinelli?
I believe there are, there's, I'm sorry, can you come back to me?
Sure. Mr. Walker?
With regard to Resolution 2015-030, and the related case 2014-0195, I was not present for the public hearing and I didn't listen to the tapes.
Okay.
Otherwise, I don't have any disclosures.
Mr. Robinson?
I have none.
Mr. Ferguson?
I have none.
You ready, Mr. Spinelli?
It looks like the case that I was recused from is not on the consent agenda, so I believe I have no disclosures.
Ms. Dean?
No.
And as for myself, I was not in attendance for the meetings involving Resolution 2015-32, 33, 34, 35, 36. Now, Ms. McConnell, if I can ask you this question for the 37th time, and that is my error, not your error, I'll make that perfectly clear. On the resolutions, they could still vote on the consent agenda, as long as that resolution is in the consent agenda. If we pull the resolution from the consent agenda, they can't act on that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
The clerk will indicate when they've, that they've abstained from the, I mean, isn't that how it works? That's how I've seen it work in the past.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Robinson, will you handle the consent agenda, please?
If I may, Mr. Chair, have we reordered the?
We got both to do.
C2, I believe, is on the agenda next.
You are cor, you are correct, you are, I'm sorry. Okay. Pardon me. Case 2015-0083, a context-sensitive solution involving Jewel Lake Road widening from East 88th Avenue to Strawberry Road. Ms. McConnell, do you have a staff report, or do we just turn it over to DOT?
Mr. Chair, the staff does not prepare reports for information items, so, but I believe representatives from DOT are here to speak to you.
Hi. My name's Randy Kinney, I'm the project manager for this project, I work for Kinney Engineering, and we're working for the Department of Transportation and Public Facilities. Just a quick overview on the project, this is Jewel Lake Road between 88th and Strawberry Road. The project limits are between those two intersections, but do not include those intersections. And you can see it here on the map, and so the proximate area of the project goes from where the fire station is, just to the south of Strawberry Road. Jewel Lake Road is a two, presently a two-lane road, it's a urban arterial, it has a posted speed limit of 40 miles an hour, it has a pathway on the west side, a continuous multi-use pathway on the west side, and on the east side, it has a discontinuous sidewalk. The ADT on the roadway is about 11,500 now, and it's projected to increase to about 13,020 years or so, so it has a relatively flat growth rate. This corridor is also a transit corridor for Transit Route 7, and has multiple bus stops along the way, pullouts, and it's, has a fairly high ridership. The project is, or I should say, to start off with, the Department of Transportation has a program, it's called the Highway Safety Improvement Program, they monitor roadways and intersections throughout the state, and any of those roadways or intersections that exhibit a safety problem, a high crash experience, becomes eligible for funding for correction under this program, HSIP program. The program really focuses on safety improvements, and as such, it tries to minimize impacts, corrections that would cause, have impacts of right-of-way utilities or environmental. The idea there is to try to get the project done and on the street as quickly as possible, and correct those problems, and save injuries and lives. Since this is an HSIP project, it has a safety focus, and that's basically the intent of the project, is safety improvements. This project was nominated for an HSIP program because it exhibits a high number of crashes in that segment, particularly the rear-end and side-street accidents, and on a two-lane urban roadway, those are usually connected with the absence of left-turn treatments. So you have somebody that's turning into a driveway or a side-street, they're stopped in the through lane, and they get struck from behind by a travel, vehicle that's traveling through the roadway intersection. It's correctable by some sort of left-turn treatments, so that the seven or so accidents that we see a year that are left-turn, or excuse me, rear-end type accidents, we would expect those to be cut in half by any kind of left-turn treatment. The, there's also a, a number of head-ons out there that are probably attributed to left-turns as well, and left-turn lanes would help those types of accidents as too. So, the idea is that we're going to develop some alternatives that would involve widening Jewel Lake Road and providing some sort of left-turn treatment at all the intersections, perhaps a continuous left-turn lane, or just at the major intersections. Some other improvements that we have, that are associated with the project, is that we're going to improve the pathway on the west side, the multi-use pathway, and we're going to connect and construct a new sidewalk on the east side, so that now pedestrians will be able to walk on both sides of the road continuously. The project will involve installation of shoulders that can also provide bike lanes for commuter riders. We're going to have some drainage improvements out there, there's some drainage issues. We're going to have ADA upgraded curb ramps, new signing and striping, and as a, because we're, our widening will displace a number of bus pullouts, or actually, all the bus pullouts, we're going to end up relocating some bus pullouts, we've been consulting with the Transit Department, and they've got some other locations that they would like to see the bus pullouts be located at. Our public involvement program is ongoing, we have a website, you see there, last fall, we were in front of the Sand Lake Community Council, we also had an open house in October of 2014, and we have one that's upcoming here in another month or so, following some of the design study reports and plans and handmittles. By and large, we've had good support from the public at all these events, they recognize that there's a safety issue out there, and they would like to see it corrected. The schedule that we have now, is that we're going to complete the environmental document this month. Because it is a federally funded project, there has to be some environmental documentation, although we don't expect any mitigatable impacts to be addressed by the environmental document. The design study report is also going to be completed this month. Plans on Hand, which is at a 65 percent design level, will be completed in October of this fall. Following that, and while we resolve the final comments for the plans, we're going to be working on right-of-way acquisition and utility coordination. Right now, we don't anticipate any permanent right-of-way acquisition, we know that we'll have some easements for construction, and we'll be able to, and we'll also have some temporary construction permits for driveways reconstruction, but by and large, the footprint of the project, we expect to fit in within the existing right-of-way. And then 2017 or 2018, that's when we expect this project to go to bid and be constructed. That's all I have for this presentation, and if we have time and it's allowable, I'd certainly like to try to answer any questions you might have.
We do have time and it is allowed. Ms. Dean?
Through the chair, my question, I always ask the DOT, is, are any houses going to be removed, any housing units?
No, we don't anticipate any permanent right-of-way takes at all.
And nothing for businesses either, then I think?
Nothing for businesses at all.
What about the fire station? Is that one of the buildings that'll be affected by this?
It, we will have improvements adjacent to the fire station, but that access and the property itself won't be impacted by our improvements. In fact, there are a couple places we are putting, we expect to have to put in retaining walls in order to maintain the footprint within the existing right-of-way, but again, we don't anticipate any, at this point, no right-of-way acquisition.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Spring?
Yes, I think the concept report looks good, it looks like it has all the elements that I think I'd expect in that road.
Thank you.
How does it match the rest of the Jewel Lake segment north of 88th Avenue, the proposed improvements?
North of 88th Avenue, well, eighty, between 88th and Strawberry is where we're constructing the project.
Oh, I'm sorry, north of Strawberry, between Strawberry and Raspberry.
I, north of Strawberry, there is a center two-way left-turn lane now, so that widening has already been in place for quite a while, they have the Sand Lake School, and some, I think a church just to the north of that, and residential on the west side, on the east side, it's, I've got a number of different commercials, and I think that center two-way left-turn lane serves those driveways and accesses pretty well.
So there wasn't any accident problem in that section, because they had left-turn lanes?
That's a great question, I don't have an answer for that, I can look at it, because it is where, just outside of our project limits.
I'm just wondering about, primarily about the continuity of the sidewalk on the east side, that you're adding sidewalks.
Correct.
Is there a sidewalk on the east side from Strawberry to Raspberry, or is there still gaps there? And?
The answer escapes me, I'm sorry.
Okay. And then, more importantly, I think, is the shoulder?
Yes.
Portion, which you propose to use as bike lanes, which I, I support that, I'm just wondering if it suddenly stops somewhere north of Strawberry, where the bikes would not have a continuous, you know, shoulder to ride on, and suddenly it stops there, but...
I'm sorry, I don't have that answer either, but I will look at it for you.
Yeah, I mean, I can see why, I understand why you did it as a HSIP project, because there's money available, but the project is in the long-range transportation plan as a road project, and I think the, my concern is, taking it as HSIP, I mean, it's too late now, but you might lose some of the continuity that you could have achieved if it was a continuous project, and that's my only concern, really, that maybe it just suddenly, just that one section, and then it stops, and you don't have a continuous sidewalk, or you don't have a continuous bike lane, and that would create a problem, I think.
Yeah, I think those are, it's a good comment, I would only just say, you know, the point of the HSIP is to correct an ongoing crash issue, and that crash issue has been corrected by the center two-way left-turn lane to the north of Strawberry Road. These other elements that you're speaking of, I think, are good ideas, I just don't know at this point whether in place, I have a feeling they are, I think there is a shoulder north of, shoulders north of Strawberry, but I just can't envision it right now.
And through the chair, just one other question, in the report, HSIP, because it primarily deals with traffic accidents, car accidents, does it also, do you also address bicycle and pedestrian accidents as part of that?
Yes.
I don't think I saw anything in here regarding bike and ped accident data, as such, did I miss that, or is it, is it there?
If it's not there, it's certainly in our design study report, it may not be in the nomination package, which was, really was the basis of this report, the DOT's nomination package provided the background for this concept report, but since then, we've looked at a comprehensive crash study, we've identified pedestrian accidents and bicycle accidents, and we're going to propose some, including, you know, the implementation of new sidewalks, improved sidewalks, and as correction, corrective measures.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? I have a couple questions. There are no cross-sections in your report, that's a little bit unusual, why are, why don't we have any cross-sections?
We have cross-sections developed, we didn't put them in the report.
Usually, there's a couple typicals shown.
Yeah.
In your preamble, you indicated that there were annually seven rear-end type accidents in this section, and this should eliminate half of them. We're spending $5 million to eliminate three, three, three and a half rear ends, is that
It depends on severity, if they, if they're high severity accidents, you know, it just depends on severity of the crash. I don't have that information in front of me, but I can get it to it if you, if you need it.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Spring?
I'd just like to follow up on your question, Mr. Chair. The accident portion isn't really the only benefit of this project, as I said before, it was included as a long-range transportation project, primarily because there was congestion, capacity issue. It's kind of on the border of a two-lane road, and in the future, the traffic was expected to be more, and so, with the third lane, it increases the capacity, and it has the benefit of reducing congestion as well as accidents, and I think the benefit cost is pretty favorable for this project.
Mr. Robinson?
Thank you, through the chairs, is the plan for the pathway and the sidewalks as reconstructed to be separated?
The west side pathway will probably be separated, it's a multi-use pathway, the east side pathway may be attached to the curb in some locations in order to keep it within the right-of-way. We would like to separate it, but we only would separate if we can get that minimum separation where we don't have snow being piled on the sidewalk, or, yeah, or if we have the right-of-way.
What's the minimum that you need to make it?
Well, we like to have seven feet.
And that way, you can leave snow in that area?
Yes.
And if you don't, you push snow on the other side of the sidewalk, or how do you clear?
No, typically what happens, it gets pushed on the sidewalk, and it gets cleared later on.
Is it, does DOT maintain this road as well, or is it the municipality that maintains it?
It's a DOT roadway right now, I think it's a DOT roadway, and will remain so.
And they maintain it?
I know it is, actually, now I recall, it is a DOT roadway, and I know it's a DOT-owned roadway, and I know they're planning to maintain it, I'm sorry.
I think that'd be helpful in the design study report, just to, just to see the constraints as to the reason why we can or cannot separate that sidewalk, I mean, clearly, as a transit, supportive corridor, makes a big difference.
Absolutely, yeah.
The quality of those sidewalks.
If I could just add that we're trying to keep this one in the right-of-way, so that we don't have an extended right-of-way acquisition process, because the left-turn treatments and some of these other treatments are, will, will be in play sooner, and can offer that safety benefit.
Yeah, no, I understand that. Is it, is it the practice, maybe you don't know this, I thought I'd heard a couple years ago, that PeopleMover was trying to avoid pullouts, for efficiency reasons. Is that then a DOT or a Muni, you know, is this, they prefer it now, to have the actual pullouts?
On certain types of roads, they do, we've been working very closely with the Transit Department, PeopleMover, and this is, they've told us what they want, and we're able to give it to them.
That's great, great, thank you for your help.
Two more questions. How old is the existing road there?
Well, I'm sure portions of it, I think that's in the report, I think it was one of the first roadways that connected south Anchorage to north Anchorage, I remember driving it when I lived, when, back in the 80s. I don't have an exact age, certainly the north, the section north of Strawberry Road has been completed recently, and there may have been some overlays along the roadway, and some of the intersections got reconstructed as well, but I think by and large, the road hasn't changed for 20, 30 years.
Thank you. My personal take on the pullouts for the buses, is they're not used by the buses, and it's very frustrating to get behind a bus, it makes a small maneuver towards the pullout, stops, pedestrians step off the curb two or three strides, get on the bus, and the bus holds up traffic, so it can get back into traffic easier, and it's frustrating. Okay, do we have any further questions? Further questions at all? Thank you very much for your report.
Thank you very much.
Now, Mr. Robinson, will you go to the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair, for items to pull, Mr. Spring? Any items to pull from the consent agenda? Mr. Cange?
No, sir.
Mr. Strike? Mr. Walker? Chairman?
Chair, would like to pull Resolution 2015-031, and as part of the consent agenda, we'll talk about the postponement of Case 2015-0057. We'll do the consent agenda first, and then we'll come to that case.
Yes, sir. Mr. Spinelli, anything to pull from the consent agenda?
No, but I was mistaken, the 2015-030 is the first case, the one I was recused from.
Now, Ms. McConnell, a recuse is different than a, an absence.
Yep, I think, we'll just have the clerk, if I may, Mr. Chair, reflect that Mr. Spinelli will not be partaking in that particular vote, that he abstained.
That's fine, okay.
Ms. Dean?
No.
Okay, with that, shall we move to approve the consent agenda, with the exception 2015-031?
Okay, we have a motion to that effect, we have a second, any discussion? And with, use your machines, since it's up. Okay, that passed, on that?
Move to approve Resolution 2015-031.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay. I asked to pull that because I have an issue with Paragraph A2, I don't think A2 reflects the testimony or the findings of fact that were given. I believe that the remainder of the resolution is appropriate, and I will not be supporting Mr. Robinson's motion to approve it, unless we, unless you will agree to remove Paragraph I don't remember spending a considerable amount of time, I, the standards were not fully expressed, it gets covered by three, where this has the note, the code needs clarification on the meaning of banner, window, et cetera, and the last comment is an editorial, staff should address this when they find time and resources. For those reasons, I won't be supporting Mr. Robinson's motion. Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, can I ask if you have a issue with the notion that, that last sentence, staff should address this, when they, there's a, there's a desire, I think, I thought I heard, for staff to more comprehensively look at new types of signage? Is that, is that your objection, to have that at all in there?
I just thought, my objection is more with the wording of it. I would, I agree that signing needs to be looked at, the new types of signing needs to be looked at, but I just, staff should address this when they find time and resources, to me, was more of an editorial comment. Any further discussion on this? We have a motion to approve, please use your machines. The motion passes, which means the resolution is accepted five to three. Ms. Robinson, will you now take Case 2015-0057?
Yes, sir, are you looking for a motion, I think we're looking for a motion to postpone 2015-0057 to 10/5/2015.
I would like to take it up earlier, I'm looking for a motion to postpone it to a date acceptable.
Is that something that Ms. McConnell was perhaps going to look into, in terms of the availability of additioner?
I believe that may be correct.
Through the chair, Mr. Robinson, at the Director's Lunch last week, we discussed scheduling this case on September 14th.
That would be acceptable?
Which is the next meeting.
I'd like to amend that motion to postpone Case 2015-0057 to September 14th.
Any discussion? Any discussion at all? Please use your machines. That motion passes. Now, we get to Case 2015-0049, the Title 21, and I believe, Ms. McConnell, that we are someplace, I believe we've handled everything up to Item Number Eight, Northern Climate on Exhibit C.
Mr. Chair, that is mostly correct, on the version of Exhibit C that Mr. Robinson handed out at the last meeting, that had some of his proposed amendments, you're correct, we have gone through everything up to Item Eight, which is on Page 7-12, but I would also draw your attention to Section Eight of the ordinance, if you can find your ordinance, it's Page Six of Eight, that still needs to be acted on as well.
Page Six of Eight of the ordinance.
Section Eight, which amends the definitions, the commission hasn't acted on that, you've been going through section by section, Exhibit C is Section Seven of the ordinance, and so you have to finish up Section Seven and do Section Eight, and then?
Okay.
That finishes it.
If we took Section Eight first, and then went to the, the one you just gave, would that, that would be acceptable?
Whatever you want to do, I'm just reminding you, you still have that bit left.
Thank you, keep that thought, we'll, we will hunt through and find that, the only reason I'm saying that is I know where Page 712 is, and I got that right in front of me. Mr. Robinson?
Just a question for staff, just so we're all clear, are you, the main package? Just a question for staff. Just so we're all clear, are you, the main packet that we're working from is a May 18, 2015 packet?
Yes.
So when you, when you just said, I'm sorry, Page Six of, or what did you just quote in terms of what we needed to still act on?
It was Page Six of Eight of the ordinance. So the ordinance is directly after the staff report.
Gotcha.
So the staff report has twenty...
Six pages?
Six pages, and then there's the ordinance. And on Page Six of Eight of the ordinance, there's Section Eight, which states Anchorage Municipal Code, Section 2114040, is hereby amended to read as follows, and it has amendments to the definitions to primary entrance, street-facing building elevation.
Can I, I think I found it. Does everyone else?
Page Six of Eight of the ordinance, which should be Page 32 if you're looking on an electronic copy.
And if I may, while others, just make sure they have that. Ms. McConnell, if we go back to the actual staff report, at the end of the staff report, staff had some additional amendments, and I believe we've worked through those as we went, the exception being 12 accessory storage section. Is that correct? And now I'm referencing Page 25 of 26 of the staff memorandum?
Yes, that is correct.
So I think the other sections we worked on in conjunction when we went through those sections, so we would just have that, we'd have the remains of Exhibit C, right?
Yes.
The definition section, and then that accessory storage section. That's basically what we need to take up this evening.
Yes.
Great.
Okay. We're on Paragraph Eight on Page 712 of Exhibit C. Mr. Robinson?
I'd like to move that we go into the Committee of the Whole.
We have to have a motion to do that. So if you want to make a motion to accept Paragraph Eight, then we can do that.
Is that right? Okay.
We have a motion, we have a second, so we, now we can go into the Committee of the Whole.
Okay, I move that we accept Section Eight as presented by staff.
And that is, what are the change of that?
And I think, just if I may, speak to that motion. I think the way we did this previously, given that I had some amendments, and I don't know if others do as well, but I think, I think we move to just accept the staff version that's presented on, in Exhibit C, on Page Seven to Twelve of Exhibit C, and then we went and made separate motions relating to my subamendments within there. But, but we, I could, we could walk through them and also have staff walk through their amendments now or at, during the Committee of the Whole, however you'd like to do it.
Continue.
So that motion, is that motion on the table then, to accept as staff?
Yeah, we're in the Committee.
So move, move to go to the Committee of the Whole.
Okay. We have a second. Mr. Walker?
I think maybe, perhaps we did this a bit prematurely, but, but could we have staff's presentation on what they're, they're amending as well, and then, and then walk through those amendments?
Sure, thank you. Staff, similarly to other sections in code, or in this, in this section of code, staff has tried to combine the multifamily and the townhouse design standards into one set of menus, and has tried to find ways to clarify the provisions, add extra choices where possible, and to reduce standards to a point where they are both still effective, but also easier to meet. So with that said, there's a little bit of additional language just under Eight, some more explanatory purpose statement type of language. Under Section A, the weather-protected entrance, the reduction of the amount of space required is lessened, and it is applied to each primary front entrance. And we spoke last meeting about the difference between a primary entrance and a primary front entrance. We'll also see this when we get to Section Eight in the ordinance on the definitions. But again, a primary entrance is any entrance that people can come in and out of the home except for into the garage. The primary front entrance clarifies that we're only talking about the front door where you would have deliveries and guests and that sort of thing. There's a new provision called covered transition spaces that's intended to provide another menu feature, menu option. On the next page, E and F clarifies that only evergreen trees are considered in where the plantings should be to minimize the blocking of sunlight access, so planting deciduous trees wouldn't be considered as blocking sunlight access. On the third page, 7-14, we just added the title of the referenced section and took out language that I think Mr. Davis thought was extraneous, and gave credit when a wind study is required. And if you'll, pardon me for a second, I'll remind myself of when a wind study is required. Okay, a wind study is required for buildings that exceed 90 feet in height. So if you build a building that is, that exceeds 90 feet in height and thus are required to do a wind study, you would have credit for that in the design standards. That's the changes proposed in Section Eight. Thank you.
Mr. Robinson, do you have a question?
Yeah, a quick question for staff, if I may. So this Northern Climate, Weather Protection and Sunlight Menu applies to what types of developments?
Multifamily and townhouse.
With eight or more units?
No.
No.
So a duplex that's in a townhouse style would have to comply?
Yes.
Thank you. If I may, I'd like to...
Can I ask a question? You're on a roll. I mean, I don't want to be here all night because I interrupted you. Paragraph A8 has a line in red, which says, "Section Eight applies to buildings with eight or more units."
So, Mr. Chair, recall that that's my version that we're working from, and those are my amendments.
Okay, that answers that question. Can I continue? I'm on a roll. Not arguing, but trying to clarify, Ms. McConnell, can a weather-protected entrance also be a covered transition space? If it, I'm trying to understand, when I walk up and there's this architectural feature, how do I know whether it is a weather-protected entrance or a covered transition space?
Mr. Chair, if you note the last sentence in 8B, "Spaces that achieve this and menu choice 8A above shall receive credit for both." So if you provide 40 square feet over your front entrance instead of 24, you get two credits.
Okay. Now, I understand I spend a good portion of my time reading law, and not as a lawyer, but as an expert. If it's, is it 40, if it's 41 square feet, I get credit for both, or does it have to be 64 square feet?
It only has to be 40, because if you've achieved 40, you've also achieved 24.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Robinson?
Thank you. So just to remind everybody, we're in Committee of the Whole. You know, here's my take on, on this section. I read this section. I hope you all have read each of the section. I want you, when you read this section, to understand that this applies everything from a duplex on up to a 280-unit multifamily building. And as I went through and I read each and every one of these sections, and tried to apply it in each of those contexts, tried to apply it to a small duplex or fourplex within a, you know, within an infill-type area that may or may not be oriented favorably, I had a hard time coming up with four things that, that a small development would be able to pick to achieve this menu. And, and so, and, and so just, if you will, whenever we've discussed this kind of menu approach, the presumption is that the menu items are available to you to be able to have those choices. And I don't read it that way. I read it that frankly, for, for some development types, you may actually have a lot of choices, some you may not. And so I took, I think this is one that frankly has gone through very little review from the development community, and I have a feeling that it would be hard to achieve. I can tell you, we have stopped providing ice-free walkways due to ongoing costs. We think they're great, but can't afford to keep them on. And you'll also recall that the city itself turned off their weather-protected street in downtown Anchorage because they couldn't afford to run it. So I, I proposed two tracks through my amendments. The first was not to say that Northern Climate design is a bad thing. In fact, it's something we expect our architects to, to consider. But should it be a guideline or should it be a code requirement? So my, my first amendment or comment would be to delete the entire section as a requirement from code and create it as a design guideline. Create an illustrative brochure that explains how you would do the right thing from everything from a duplex on up to a large multifamily project, and hope that responsible developers do it. If that wasn't acceptable, then I proposed another track that I thought was fairer and more achievable, and that was, you know, the main amendments there were reducing the four requirements to three, applying this only to structures with, with eight units or greater, and having basically a similar kind of relief valve at the end, which says, "Their director may reduce or eliminate the number of features required by this title if it can be shown that due to site-specific circumstances, a limited number of features feasible for the specific development type are available." That's consistent with, as you'll recall, some of the other changes we made that's trying to encourage that flexibility. If you just, if you look at a site and you say, "Boy, I can't, I can't get, you know, C, I got a small project, I don't, why would I need a transit, I don't have a transit route nearby, I don't need a loading zone," you know, you just go through and you just say, "Hey, I'm having trouble coming up with that number." So that's what I, you know, that's what I had proposed, and I'd be open before we go out and start talking about these amendments to hear feedback from the rest of the Commission.
I'll start, since nobody else will jump in. I do think that it would be easier to meet this requirement on a larger-scale project than on a smaller-scale project. I mean, if I'm building 40 units, I could make my goal on weather-protected entrance and covered transition space multiple times. There's nothing in here that's saying you can only have one, and I could meet that without much, much effort. If I've got a duplex, I've got much harder time trying to make these. My site might limit my orientation for sunlight access. I mean, every architect up here knows that that's a selling point, so they're going to try to do it, but some sites aren't. Really, the site is going to dictate whether you get E, F, G, and H, not your designer, all, all four of those. With a smaller unit, it's awfully, awfully difficult to do an atrium on that one. So I, I would lend my support either to the language, Section Eight, Section Eight reminds me of MASH, but Section Eight applies to buildings with eight units or more, or handle a different direction. Ms. McConnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think there might be some confusion about how some of these are interpreted, and perhaps I should have gone through them a little bit more thoroughly, even if they didn't have amendments to them. But I, I think these are not as difficult to achieve for a duplex as, as maybe it appears. First of all, I turn your attention to G, sunlight access for neighbors. So PR means parks and recreation. So the intent is that all of our parks will be rezoned to park, to PR. And if you have a two-story structure, you're highly unlikely to shade an area, an adjacent area for, you know, so much time on March and September 1st, the 21st, as to not meet this. This is going to come into play a lot more when you have taller buildings. And you get two credits for meeting G. So G's pretty easy to meet.
Two questions. How do I know I get two credits?
If you go back to Eight, the very, before we start with A, B, C, D, the very last sentence says, "Menu choices 8F, 8G, 8I, 8J, and 8L shall each count as two features."
Okay, that would maybe be clearer if you put it in the description, or somehow put it in bold or something so it would get caught. But are you telling me I get G by right unless I impact a park, sidewalk across the street, and neighboring residentially-zoned property? By right, I get those. Is that what you're basically saying?
Unless you shade an adjacent lot-zoned park, a sidewalk across the street, or a neighboring residentially-zoned property for more than six, unless you block their sunlight where they don't get at least six hours of sun on the equinox and in between, you get two credits. You get half your credits.
So if we could on that, so, so if I'm on a north-south street, right, and I'm the south lot with a lot directly to the north of me, and I'm set back five feet from the property line, and they're set back five feet from the property line, does that achieve it just by right? I mean, how, what does shading mean? Does it mean any, any shadow is affecting a building, their lot? What does that even mean? Windows and their property? If it's a single-story home in an old R3 neighborhood, so it's an old log cabin, and we put up a, a three-story, which is not uncommon, townhouse-type structure, is there going to be enough swing from the east and the west to give them six hours of sunlight? In which case, why even have it? It just kind of gets it. I...
Okay, and I, I think it's unclear, the word property in my, and I'll get to you and Andre in a second. Property, in my earlier vestiges of reading Title 21, we always assume that was at the property line and not the structure. Is that still correct, Ms. McConnell?
I think it's not entirely clear.
Okay. Mr. Spinelli?
I was kind of going down the same road I think Tyler was, is just, are we shading a portion of the property or, or the entire property?
I think we'll need to clarify that.
Can you at least tell me what you think the intent is? Because I don't even know what, what we're trying to achieve in that, in that instance.
I think the intent is that if you put up a tall building, you need to design it and site it in such a way as to reduce your shadowing impact on neighboring residential and parks. and parks.
I mean, for me to, for me to understand this, I would want to see the modeling done by staff, not by, you know, I would want to see how you model this. And I think this is, this is, you know, my frustration starts when you have all those sections having to do with entrances facing the street, design menus on how to attract, you know, how to kind of create that. You kind of make your way through all of those menus, and then you get to the last one, and you realize, oh, I created a covered entry there that met the minimum standards, but guess what? That's not really the minimum standard because in my building type, the minimum standard calls me to do 40 square feet or whatever to be able to get the, it just, it's like something that just keeps coming and coming and coming. And it's that cumulative impact that I think, that I've grown frustrated with the more I work with this code. And again, that was why I suggested either make it for a larger type of development or make it a guideline, which it frankly is in a lot of communities. And what I will ask the commission to do, one way or the other, is I want to move on this and act on it one way or the other tonight because the assembly is frankly waiting for this action to be able to move forward, pass some regulations so that the development community knows what they're dealing with moving forward into design for next year. And I don't want to wait and come back in September and, you know, because we don't understand one section.
Ms. McConnell, while we're in the committee of the whole, do you have any more to add?
Yes, I'd just like to explain solar orientation under E. Solar orientation is defined in Chapter 14 as a south-facing orientation or within 30 degrees of south. And then, that's all I'll say right now. Thank you.
Does anybody have anything to add before we come out of committee of the whole? Mr. Spring, is your machine not working or?
I pushed the, oh, well.
It's not working. Raise your hand, that worked.
Sorry, I had it on the wrong, okay, does that work now?
It's working now.
Okay.
Mr. Spring, you're?
Okay, yeah, I was looking at the electronic document and probably didn't register. This is an interesting section, and I think my primary concern is the sunlight access for neighbors. And this came up in a case recently, the Widener case on C Street, and a lot of neighbors were concerned about this are for a building that was four or five stories tall, somewhat taller than the surrounding. And one of their biggest issues was the sunlight access. And I think, and I voted in favor of the proposal, primarily because I think the petitioner demonstrated that it wasn't going to have an impact on the neighbor with solar access. And they did a good job of setting it back and demonstrating that and oriented it so it didn't impact it. I would like to see some type of requirement in the code that assures the neighbors of developments that are going to be significantly larger. And I expect there'll be more such infill developments where they're going to be significantly larger than the surrounding, that we can assure them that, yeah, you're going to have solar access, and solar access is going to be secure for you. This is the only section, I think, that deals with it in the new code. Is that correct? Or is there another section that we could fall back on that would help us out here?
The only other section that has any relation to solar access would be the height transitions, a section that you've discussed previously, where there's an imaginary plane that goes up 15 feet from the lot line of a protected lot and then goes inward at a, I think it's a three-rise for five-run, but it could be the opposite, I can't quite remember, that the new building has to build under to protect sunlight access. But other than that, this is the only section.
Well, thanks for pointing that out. I was trying to find that, and I couldn't find it today.
It's in Chapter 6.
Chapter 6. So this is somewhat redundant then, or is it, how is this different from that section than the transition section? How does this add any value to the development over and above the transition requirements?
Well, some of, some of this section discusses sunlight access for the development that's being developed, the building that's being built, whereas the height transitions is solely for protecting adjacent properties.
But as far as G, sunlight access to neighbors, that may be somewhat redundant then, or it may be covered by the other section.
I would have to test that. I can't answer that question.
And with regard to the other issue that you just brought up, the daylighting for the buildings within the development, and I agree, that's a concern. It seems to me, though, that there's other sections that might deal with that already, in particular, the separation distances between buildings, which is in another previous section.
That only applies if there's multiple structures on a lot. It doesn't apply to buildings on adjacent lots.
Okay, so it doesn't apply, okay, on adjacent lots. So there might be a case where somebody would build a lot line and they'd be shadowed by the building next to it and blocked.
Recall, many of our side setbacks are five or 10 feet, so they're relatively narrow.
All right, thanks for clarification.
Mr. Robinson, then Mr. Spinelli?
I just think, I think Mr. Spring hit on it. I mean, I think the point was that when you have transition areas or you have an area of lower intensity next to a higher-intensity area, I think it's absolutely appropriate to try to understand the impact on that, on that from one scale to the next. I just, within a like-zoned area, and all, most, I think most of our R3, R4 areas are little, you know, little lots, 50-foot-wide lots, that even if you assemble a few of them, you still are, and a lot of them have north-south-oriented streets. Half the streets are north-south, half are east-west. And I just, I just think that it's problematic. It sounds really good until you actually try to put it into practice. And that's like a lot of things in this code. And I'm just trying to, the fact that we don't have all this figured out by now shows me that we should maybe figure it out through some kind of design guidelines and good, you know, best practices. And then if we really feel strongly later and have figured it out, then we should codify it at a later date.
Mr. Spinelli?
I was, I was going to drill down into some more questions on the orientation of sunlight and the 20%, but I would prefer to just leave that alone and say that I would support turning this entire section into a guideline, or at least making it apply only to eight units as proposed by Mr. Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Spinelli. Any other comments, Mr. Walker?
I think I would support a motion to convert this to a guideline.
Okay. We are in the committee of the whole. Anyone have any comments before we come out of the committee of the whole? Did I have a motion to come out of the committee of the whole? Thank you, Mr. Cange, thank you, Mr. Walker, for seconding. We are now out of the committee of the whole. Mr. Robinson, you had made a motion to put us into the committee of the whole. Has your motion changed?
Well, I think, you know, the main motion is to accept Section 8 as staff suggests. I think what I'd like to do is start by proposing my Amendment 13, and based on that response, either work through the rest or not.
You said Amendment 13.
So Amendment 13 in mine is to, basically, delete the section as a code requirement and adopt it as a development guideline, to direct staff to create an illustrative guide, to identify best practices in northern climate weather protection design, and to have that document available online for the development community.
Do we have a second to that motion? We have a second by Mr. Spinelli. Do we have any discussion before we vote? Mr. Spring?
Yeah, we're out of the committee of the whole, so we need to be on record, I think. And I'll be supporting the motion, all right. I support the, all the concepts in here, I think. And, but I think I convinced myself, maybe falsely, but still, I convinced myself that most of this is already covered in other sections, and I don't see that it's necessary to impose another layer of regulations on top of those other ones. Like the staff has mentioned, sunlight access for neighbors is covered under Chapter 6 of transition. That's my primary concern, that new developments and infill areas don't impede or don't cut off sunlight to other neighbors, because there's going to be a big issue with that, I think, in the future. And I think it's already covered. I think the daylighting of the building itself, well, that's what setbacks are for, you know, setbacks, we've got side yard setbacks, front yard setbacks, rear yard setbacks. We've got streets, you know, that's 60 feet wide. The buildings within the lots are given separation distances within the new code also. And these other issues involving ice-free walkway, you know, sheltered passenger loading zone or transit stops, I mean, those are nice things. I mean, ice-free walkways, I agree, though, is very expensive to implement, and I don't, I don't think anybody's going to be choosing that as one of the options. And I think it's just going to be kind of a afterthought of the code. People will be wondering, why was that in there? It's not, nobody ever uses it. Transit stops, I mean, the city has a transit stop program. They build transit stops, so asking a private developer to do that, even if it's part of the menu, doesn't make sense to me. Bicycle parking is a requirement in the code. There's already bicycle parking required. I don't see how that really adds anything either. So basically, I think we'll be okay with advisory, and maybe if it's a really good guideline, maybe enhanced even above this. I mean, there's a lot more that could be added than just these menus, a lot more. Maybe that would serve better than regulating it here in the code.
Anyone have anything else to add, Mr. Robinson?
No, I'm going to support the motion. I, again, I think that we ought to be thinking in terms of northern climate and design, and I think to some degree we do. I think the best way, though, to affect this change is with really good illustrations. I think it's really hard to describe in words how to achieve this. I think, I think that good suggestions, you know, good, almost like a, you know, a bit of a campaign of such can be effective. I don't think we have to always use a stick to encourage good development.
Any other comments? Please use your machines. That motion is passed, eight to zero. Now, if I understood the conversation earlier, we're going to page six of eight of the code, and we're going to talk about primary.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
You have Sections nine, 10, and F to go through in this attachment C.
Okay, I, I apologize. I had myself convinced we were done. Thank you very much. Would you care to walk us through F, Ms. McConnell?
Nine, you mean?
Nine, nine.
This addresses treatment of front entrances. And it was proposed to be a menu. Sorry, I'm trying to negotiate between the proposed amendments. It would apply only to front entrances and require some sort of delineated space so that, for instance, if you have a townhouse where you have your parking right out in front, that there's some sort of delineation between your driveway surface and the entrance into your dwelling, and you're not walking into your dwelling directly off of the driveway, off of the asphalt. So that was, that was one of the standards. That it's a minimum of four, minimum dimension of four feet is distinguished from adjacent areas in vehicular parking. And then, including three of the following, five options. That's Section 9.
Okay. This is where it gets confusing because the sheltering roof structure here is 12 square feet, and we were just talking about 24 square feet and 40 square feet.
12 square feet is an option here. If you do better than that and you do 24, you would get, well, you would have gotten credit in the previous one.
Okay, all right, okay, that, okay. Any have, anyone have any questions or comments on Section 9? Mr. Robinson?
Well, I have an amendment that I proposed. You know, again, I appreciate staff's attempt to simplify it. I think the way that it reads, though, is that you, you know, you have to do three of the, you know, of the following things, of the list of five things. So you have to do three out of the five. And I just frankly find it overly prescriptive, and my amendment simply says that you'll, you know, "Primary front entrances shall be given, you know, emphasis and physical access through features such as..." I don't think the list is exhaustive. I don't think that just because you do three of them, you've got a better project. And I think sometimes it'll be frustrating to try to get three. I don't object to the intent. I just want there to be flexibility, and that's where my amendment is. I'd take questions on that or otherwise, you know, propose it as a, as a motion.
Does, would your motion then, I'm a little concerned that the wording on your motion might lead someone to think they have to do all five. Now, just, it's the wording that bothers me.
I, you know, what I said is examples of features that meet the intent of the section include the following, and those are just examples. And I think if anything, the question, or I'm sure the concern that staff may have is how do we know that they actually achieve it? Who gets to decide? But you know what? If we're going to go down this road and really require these intents to be met, I think, I think we've got to allow, got to allow for good design.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Ms. McConnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Robinson did hit on one of my concerns, and that this will lead to a significant amount of back and forth between applicants and staff. Also, the amendment now has a "such as" in the first section and then a list of other examples, so it's kind of confusing the way it's written, that perhaps if the first "such as porch landing or patio, et cetera," is not going to be a requirement, it should be put into the list of examples. Though again, I would urge that that remain a requirement.
Thank you, Ms. McConnell. Mr. Robinson, the ball's in your court to make a motion.
I think to be consistent here and to be fair with staff, I'd like to, I'd like to first make a motion to accept Section 9 of Exhibit C as written by staff.
Okay, do I have a second? I have a second. Mr. Walker, thank you. Mr. Robinson?
I'd like to amend that motion. And I'd like to amend that motion through what I've called Amendment 21. Again, I'm open. Again, I'm, I'm open to commission feeling differently, and I, and I do want to value staff's work otherwise. I, I simply think that by, and it's, and it, and it may be a little bit clunky, and, and again, I was just trying to keep the suggestions there as suggestions and the language there. I think frankly there's time between now and assembly adoption to, to, to clean up anything. It's hard to work from this, you know, this, this version. But I would simply have these as examples that you have to achieve and not make it a menu, and that's what Amendment 21 is.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on this motion? Mr. Walker, you, you made the second before, is that, are you going to second this motion?
Yeah, it was actually, I didn't know if we needed to move to adjourn to a committee, but I'd like to ask, Mr. Chair, if I may, Tyler, what, if we make these, I mean, really what we're doing is we're converting these from requirements to guidelines? Is that fair?
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chair, I, I think, I think you are, other than, as Ms. McConnell suggested, you, you have to somehow check the box of an entryway treatment in your review. So you can't, unlike the other one, which is purely a guideline, you, you have to have achieved some kind of front entrance that has separate emphasis and physical access. Again, the, the issue that I had is we already dealt with building orientation in a previous section, you know, and then you come back and you have this, and it, it's kind of like, well, why isn't that in, in the other place if that's where it needed to be? And that's, that's where, when you're designing a project, that's where the complication comes in, and, and so that's why I'm suggesting it to be more like a guideline, but you have to prove out in some way that you've achieved it.
Mr. Walker, did that answer your question?
Yes.
Mr. Spring?
Yeah, I'm kind of ambivalent about this one. I think, I've seen a lot of examples where meeting these, this menu would really help the development. I mean, there's a lot of developments that just have access right off the park, you know, and bam, you're, that's it, you knock on the door, and that's, you go in the, in the room. The, but I think this one's a little bit different, that there's only five menus or options to choose from. The rest of them have eight, or nine, or 10, or whatever. I think in this case, there's not a lot of options. I mean, they exploited every possible option there is, yet they're requiring three out of five. So that's pretty prescriptive, I think, unusually prescriptive, I think, as compared to the other areas. So, I don't want to, I'm not going to support the amendment, but, because I do think it's important to have some type of entry requirement, but I'm not really happy with how tight this one is, really, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Spring. Mr. Robinson?
Could I ask Mr. Spring a question? Mr. Chair, if, if there was a sixth option that simply said, as we've adopted previously, "Other methods as approved by the planning director that provide appropriate emphasis of, of primary front entrances," you know, something to that effect, would, would that bring you along, or be a better way to address the concern that I have?
I, I think that'd be a better way, and maybe not even go three, you know? I'd go down to two, possibly. Just needs something, some, I think primarily you need a cover over the doorway so that you don't get, you know, rained on when you get in, right? So that 12 foot, square foot, isn't that what that's intended to do? Pretty much, I mean, that's, seems the minimum amount. I would go along with that and maybe reduce the number of requirements.
We have a motion, we have a second by Mr. Walker. Mr. Robinson, do you want to restate your motion?
I think, Mr. Chair, what I'd like to do is withdraw this motion and offer a different one.
Okay, the motion's withdrawn. Mr. Robinson?
I would like to amend staff's motion, or staff's proposal for changes to Number nine, to reduce the required number of features from three to two, and to add an F that states "other methods as approved by the planning director" that emphasizes primary front entrances.
Mr. Spring, are you seconding that motion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Strike?
Yes, question I have is, Tyler, through the chair, will that still include the language of the three options that have to be chosen?
You know, as stated now, it would, it would mean that there would be two options. They could either come from List A through E or be, you know, another, another example that the planning director or his or her designee buy off on.
And that, and that's your intent?
That's my intent. Thank you.
Mr. Spinelli?
Yeah, I have a question for staff on the menu option E, landscaping and pedestrian features. It's quite a few things thrown in there, planters, pedestrian scale lighting, accent lighting, and special paving treatments. If I was to provide planters, lighting, and paving treatments, is that just one item?
Through the chair, Mr. Spinelli. I think a strict reading of the code, assuming the amendment passes, with the, that you would need two separate items out of A through F.
For what's worth, Ms. McConnell, I agree with that reading. That reading is, what you described is consistent with what we've done every place else, so, yeah. Mr. Robinson?
That said, there could be a separate motion after this motion that says multiple features could count as more than one feature.
Or the second feature could count as F. So I don't think you really need to do that.
All right, we have a motion. Mr. Robinson, would you restate the motion for me?
I believe by motion, and I asked the clerk to help, is to accept staff's recommendations, or to amend staff's recommendations to reduce the number of requirements from three to two, and to add a Section F that states "other methods as approved by the planning director" that emphasizes primary front entrances.
I think that matches what I've said. Anyone have any further comments on that motion? Hit your machine. Thank you.
But then we lose the document.
Well, I am sorry. Hit your machine. Go back.
To clarify, Section F will then change the current F to G and move down further in the, in that section. Based on what I'm, based on the document I'm reviewing. There's already an F.
You're reviewing the wrong document.
The wall modulation?
Oh.
It's, it's building articulation F.
Well, it's, no, staff has deleted the one, what's in gray. From building articulation, wall modulation, front-facing garages, staff's recommendation has deleted that.
Ignore that, then.
Am I right, Ms. McConnell?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
God, one for the chair. It's been a long time, Gay. Okay. Mr. Walker?
So, we're not in the committee of a whole here, but I'm just going to try to casually work through this with Mr. Robinson. So, considering Mr. Spinelli's input, what if we dispense with F and put that language at the end of E, and then ahead of that said something like, any, any of the following, or any two of the following, or something, give you a number of, so if you pick any of those two, or something else? I mean, is that too overly complicated, or?
If I may, I think it is. I think you keep F, but I think if you want to, maybe after we approve this motion, have a subsequent motion that says something to the fact that multiple features may count as, as two, or as satisfying F in addition to E, or is this, how, you know, if someone wants to work on that a little bit?
Right, just because I can see, you know, Erica's twisting a little bit about the, that we're leaving it kind of open-ended, I think, so.
No, I think if you provided landscaping and lighting, one of those would count for E, and the other one could count for F. I see F as covering the situation.
So I guess my question, this is the reason I brought it up, do we need to?
We need to clarify.
Make sure there's no interpretation, because the, whenever there's interpretation, it always works not in my favor. So, I guess I want to watch out for the development.
So, so we, if I'm, we have, we have a main motion which, which accepts a section as staff. This, this motion just does that one revision. Maybe we clean that motion, and then if there's a subsequent motion that clarifies what, what I think Erica was agreeing to, that, that E, EF, that maybe someone else could work on, or I will, and then we just quickly pass that one, I think we would achieve.
That's great.
Everything.
Okay, we have a motion, okay. Let the record show, Mr. Spohies is in the House. Mr. Spohies, you can't vote on this particular issue right now.
Understood.
The, the motion is adopting the staff recommendations, changing the number of requirements from three to two, and adding a new requirement, F, that provides the ability for the director to accept alternate means and methods.
Is that true as one main motion right now, Laura?
Yeah.
It is, okay.
Okay.
So we would need to amend this motion still?
Well, no, let's vote on this one.
Is this the? Is it, is this the main motion?
It is, okay. So if, if, if I may, Mr. Chair, restate that. So, the, the main motion is to accept it all as staff, plus reducing from three to two, plus adding Section F as previously stated. So if there's an additional amendment right now to clarify Section E, I think now would be the time to make it prior to voting on this motion, on this motion.
Okay, all right.
I don't have any language to recommend, if you've got.
Can I do it?
Please.
Please. Can I offer an amendment?
I don't know if you can offer amendment to your own motion.
Well, I think I can.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Robinson.
Is that the best way to do it? Just clarify the main, the main motion? Or do you want an amendment? What's the easiest way?
An amendment.
Okay. So I move that we add language to Section E that states multiple features may count as more than one menu option.
That, no, that doesn't work. Because somebody could argue, five landscaping trees would count as five items. In this paragraph.
I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm not a code writer. I, I can tell when the code works or doesn't work. That's what I do. I, I guess I would defer, you know, does, does Ms. McConnell have any kind of suggestion? I think what we're trying to say is, you could do a whole lot of things in E, or frankly, you could do a whole lot of things within C that are multiple things, that's still real, but it's still, because it's only in one letter, right? So you could do a double door, an entry side light, transom window, and a planer box, and you only, you're only done one.
My position is that if you do a landscaping feature and a pedestrian feature, one of those could be approved as E, and the other could be approved as F.
So separating landscaping and pedestrian?
No, I don't think there's any need for another amendment. I think you can, your, your goals will be achieved by using F, the language you've proposed in F, that gives the director the discretion to approve, to approve another method that emphasizes a primary entrance, and what better method than one we've already listed as acceptable?
I support Ms. McConnell's position.
I withdraw that motion.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Robinson has withdrawn his amendment. So we're back, we're back to the main motion, and I will restate it. It's from three to two, and we're adding an F, director's prerogative. If there's no other comments, please use your machines. That motion carried. Thank you very much. We, Ms. McConnell, we have 10 ahead of us, and the definite, and one definition, is that correct?
Mr. Chair, you have Section 10, and then you have Section F, which begins on page seven dash 18, which has a two, well, it has a one, two, three, four, oops, and then you have Section G. However, there are no amendments after F2. So as I see it, you have amendments proposed in 10, you have amendments proposed in F2, and then you have Section 8.
Okay, let's take a 10-minute recess and then come back. We're in recess for 10 minutes. I do not want to have another one.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Sure. This section is intended to address landscaping around multifamily buildings, multifamily and townhouse buildings, and between driveways for townhouses, and it's a little complicated to try to address all of those issues in one section. This, the requirement for buildings to have either foundation, or to have foundation planting around the, between that and parking, sorry, let me back up. It's treated differently whether there are garages in the building or not. So if there aren't garages in the building, you have a foundation planting requirement of five feet between, and a, either a parking lot or a drive aisle that would abut the building, and that is in 10C. There is such a requirement today, although, or I'm sorry, in the old code, although the old code does allow that to be walkway instead of lands, walkway or landscaping, but in this section, the requirement is for a foundation planting bed. Section B requires separations between townhouse driveways, at least every two driveway. This was something that was very important to an Assembly member who's not current, on the Assembly anymore, but something that came up while this person was on the Assembly. I, I didn't happen to bring any of the illustrations that we've provided to you in the past, but certainly we could provide you any number of photographs of townhouse developments where the. where the entire front is asphalt, and this was a reaction to that. And a good example of this being provided is the Aurora Square townhouses, those very modern townhouses that are on Northern Lights directly west of Value Village near Boniface. So the, the general intent for structures that have garages is to make sure that there is some green space, there's some green space or yard in front of the, each unit. And then the last section, D, talks about the amount of landscaping material, plant material that's required. And we tried to separate it between whether you had a short landscaping bed in front of your structure, or whether you had an actual driveway or parking space in which you would have at least 20 feet, and then you would have a long landscaping bed. And so you would have more options there to put more plant material. So that's Section 10.
We have a little too high. We have a little too high, the foundation planting bed in area subsection 10C above. Why is that separated from the 10C? Why isn't that part of 10C?
Because 10D addresses all of the planting materials for 10A, 10B, and 10C, but it could be, it could be moved.
It just, on that one. Anyone have questions for staff on that? Seeing none, Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve Section 10 as written by staff with, with two modifications. The first being in 10A, to add the language that the planning director can modify or exempt this requirement in site-specific instances, such as narrow lots and shared entry porches, that will not allow the area to extend to the street due to other requirements of the code. And a addition to D4 that states the planning director can modify or exempt the standards where it can be shown that plantings would interfere with solar panels, foundation insulation, and other elements that promote other objectives under Title 21.
I have a second by Commissioner Strike. Mr. Spring?
Yeah, I am going to support the motion, but I'd like some clarification, I'm not sure how to, what the issue is regarding the First Amendment. The planning director can modify or exempt this requirement in site-specific instances, such as narrow lots, I understand, and shared entry porches, that will not allow the area to extend to the street due to other requirements of the code? I don't understand what that means exactly. Does that mean you basically can't fit in the landscaping?
Well, I'll give you an example. Just from personal experience, it, we're working on a little duplex right now, that's a front-loaded duplex, there's no alley. It has a front porch with two entries, kind of centrally located to the two units, but in order to accommodate the parking, you, you have to park effectively for two little two-bedroom units, you've got four parking spaces in the front. And I don't see how you would then also extend this area from the entryway to the street and also meet the parking requirements. I don't see any, any way around it. And so, you know, would it were that I had an alley in that instance, or whatever, and I could put the cars in the back, it wouldn't, wouldn't be an issue, but, but four spaces on a, on a little narrow lot is, you know, it, it's just, I think it's a nice project. The community council thinks it's a nice project. You know, I wish I could get four units, but I can only get two, and, and it is what it is.
I see. Yeah, I didn't realize it was from the front entry. Yeah, that makes sense. So it's in the middle, that wouldn't work.
Even if it's on the side, it may not be, you know, the, the parking, because of what a traffic engineer would require for actual parking spaces, may encroach into that area that, you know, wouldn't be able to extend unimpeded. You know, you could use the setbacks, but you, you may not have a, I don't want to get into a disagreement at the counter that, you know, it's gotta, it's gotta go all the way, and then, well, then how do I fit the parking on it? Well, then I guess, I guess I go down to a single-family home in that instance.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Mr. Spinelli?
I support the motion, but I do have some issues with another section in the code, Section B, where it calls out front driveway separations. Having a four-foot planter between two garages is, is a bit much to squeeze if you're, if you're doing a duplex, and then you are allowed to combine two driveways, but then the maximum width is 32 feet, which, in the illustration it shows, works out great for a two-car garage and a single-car garage, but with two two-car garages, you couldn't fit that driveway in the 32 feet, so you'd be left putting the four-foot planter in the middle of it, which wouldn't, would, wouldn't last. It, it just wouldn't stand the test of time, people would drive over that planter. And I think that this code probably, I don't know if this was written before duplexes were included, or townhouse-style duplexes, but that's my issue, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm not interpreting the code correctly, but I see that as a problem.
Is that an amendment, Mr. Spinelli, or is a concern, or?
If staff agrees that my concern is valid, then I would offer the amendment to change the 32 feet in Section B to 36 feet.
The planning department's opinion is that two two-car driveways is too wide of an uninterrupted paved area, and it should be separated by landscaping, which is required to have edging to discourage people from driving over it.
Mr. Spinelli, do you want to make a motion?
Uh, yeah.
Make an amendment?
I would move to amend the original motion to include a change to 32 feet in Section B to 36 feet.
We have a motion, we have a second by Ms. Dean. I was party to the initial conversations four years ago, five years ago, and I mean, the, the, at that time, 36 would not have flown, I can tell you that. Do Ms. McConnell or Mr. Robinson, do either of you have any other city jurisdictions that pop up to mind, one way or the other way on this?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear you.
Do you have any other jurisdictions that you, that you could reference either one way or the other way on, on the 32 to 36?
Do you mean concerns that might be raised by other departments?
No. Examples from other cities?
Not off, not offhand.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Walker?
Well, so I was just looking at this diagram and running some quick math, and if you have two duplex units with 16-foot garage doors and two feet of space on either side of the door, which is fairly typical with the four-foot planter in between, and you've got your five-foot setbacks on either side, you're at like 54 feet, which, I mean, we've got a lot of 50-foot-wide lots in this town, so, thinking out loud, I don't know, it seems like that's going to put a lot of downward pressure on the density we can put on those 50-foot-wide lots.
Well, if, if he asks for 36, you could still put, do the 32. Mr. Walker?
You could do the 32, but you're going to end up with one two-car garage and one one-car garage.
Ms. Dean?
Here's what happened in my neighborhood. After the permit was closed, the builder just came back and paved. Seriously, that's what they did, so, I mean, you know, I mean, that's what we don't want to see happen, we want to see the landscaping stay, and so this is the best chance for the landscaping to last long-term. So yeah, you don't have to make it full 36-wide, you can still keep it 32, but it just gives that option of going a little wider if you need to. If you do, and that's a nice width at 32, that's not squeezing all the cars super close together.
Anybody have any further comments on, on Mr. Spinelli's motion? Mr. Spinelli, would you care to restate your motion?
My motion is to amend the motion, to amend Section 10B, the 32-feet foot width would change to 36-foot width.
The other dimensions remain the same?
Correct.
Okay. Any other comments? Please use your machines. That went down eight to one, or, pardon me, that passed eight to one. Okay, Mr. Robinson, we're on your motion. Would you care to restate your motion?
To approve Section 10, adding, at the end of 10A, the planning director can modify or exempt this requirement in site-specific instances, such as narrow lots and shared entry porches, that will not allow the area to extend to the street due to other requirements of the code. And a Section D, little four, the planning director can modify or exempt the standards where it can be shown that plantings would interfere with solar panels, foundation insulation, or other elements that promote other objectives under Title 21.
Fine, thank you. Any, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, please use your machine. Ms. McConnell, is there not a change on 11?
There is, Mr. Chair, I missed it earlier, I apologize.
I don't think you, I think it's pretty clear. Could we ever have a situation where there were two buildings on one lot, served by one meter base?
I'm going to defer to some of the people on the commission who have more experience with that than I do.
I question the wording, serving a single building. I think it would be better if mechanical, electrical equipment servicing, mechanical equip, mechanical and electrical equipment shall be screened from view as required.
No, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Dean?
Chair Ferguson, to answer your question on the two buildings for one meter head, I've seen condo developments where the garages were separate from the main structure that people lived in, and I'm guessing that the garages were on a same meter as the home inside the building, so that would be one meter head serving two separate buildings, actually, you know, kind of an odd configuration. That's the only way I can think of it, a detached garage.
You know why this change is being proposed?
I don't.
Because I like the existing language, I think is actually clear. Somebody could get carried away on what is an electrical equipment, and whether it needs to be screened or not.
If I could read the language from 21070804, the requirement applies to heating, ventilation, and cooling equipment, pumps, generators, and groups of four or more utility meters. The screening requirement does not apply to telecommunications equipment, chimneys, minor vent pipes, wall vents that are flush or near flush with the building wall, or solar collectors and reflectors.
Which definition complies?
The language that is referred to in the subsection in 2107080G4 is, the title of that subsection is mechanical and electrical equipment. So I expect one of the reasons for this amendment was to make the language consistent, but I think if you wanted to take out serving a single building, so it would read mechanical and electrical equipment shall be screened from view as required by this subsection, that would be fine.
And if we could, electrical equipment would be as defined by Section 8080G4, right?
Correct.
Okay. The Chair would appreciate a motion to the staff's agreed language. Mr. Strike?
One of the, one of the questions I would have would be, large electrical junction boxes serving that single unit. I mean, you see these, you see large junction boxes out serving three or four, so who's going to screen it?
They could be painted, they could be painted out.
It's got, it says, no, it says screened from view. And so the language here is, single units need to be screened. I think that's why that language was changed.
They should be allowed to paint them out.
It's screened from view.
Is there a definition or a guideline? Because I, screened to me means cover it up with something, not painted, not painted different color.
Right.
The requirement in this section says that it has to be screened from view from abutting streets, except where located more than 40 feet from the street or right-of-way, using one of the following choices, as long as the choices do not conflict with the requirements and standards of the utility companies. The choices are site-obscuring landscaping, a site-obscuring fence, wall, or structure that is adequate in height to screen that equipment, wall-mounted utility meter bases and CT cabinets finished in a color that is consistent with other areas of the building facade, equipment that is disguised, camouflaged, or hidden so that its function as mechanical or electrical equipment is imperceptible to an uneducated eye.
But, but you have a case where you can have a five-acre plot that's going to be developed, the developer doesn't put that electrical in, that's been put in to service that area, doesn't control that junction box, so here's-
That's not what they're talking about.
Well, you, you took out single building in that language.
We don't control the, the electrical utility. That box is controlled by Chugatch, and it's a regulated activity.
Mechanical and electrical equipment serving the buildings.
I'll, I'll, I'll send Chugatch to go talk to the planning department.
Or the developers who are looking to develop a plot that's going to need that electrical junction box or that electrical apparatus.
The single-building requirement is also in 080G4.
And I think that's why the language was changed, to be specific to single buildings, because the building owner has control then.
You don't need it here because it's in the reference section.
Okay, we've got quite a few in the, Mr. Strike, are you done? Mr. Robinson?
I guess I'm missing why, if I go to the section that it talks about, it says, "mechanical electrical equipment serving a single building shall be screened from," why is this section necessary on top of the other section?
To remind the person who's going through the design standards that this is something that they need to meet. It's a cross-reference for, to alert a designer of requirements.
It's intentionally redundant in this case, we're acknowledging that someone at this point has gotten lost.
I wouldn't go too far.
I wouldn't use the word "lost," but yes, it is redundant.
Mr. Spinelli?
I was hoping that staff could kind of clarify that where it does say mechanical and electrical equipment serving a single building, the intention there is- and electrical equipment serving a single building," the intention there is a AC equipment or facilities of the building and not J-boxes, transformers, and pedestals, mainline electrical equipment that might be located on your property in an easement.
It's for things that serve a single building. So, if you have a box out near the street that serves multiple buildings, this would not apply.
Maybe that's why the single building.
Or could serve multiple buildings if, say, you're the first building?
If it's a development and that thing, that box, is clearly shown to be serving more than one, then the standard wouldn't be applied to it through the design and review process.
Okay, I think we beat this one into the ground. Could we have a motion to accept the staff language? Thank you, Mr. Robinson. We have a second by Mr. Strike. Any discussion? Please use your machines. That motion passed.
Mr. Chair, I'll try to be brief on Section F2. This section regulates multiple residential structures on a single lot. This section mostly came from the Planning and Zoning Commission a couple of years ago, right around the, right around when Title 21 was being finalized, this section was kind of driven by this commission. The proposed changes are at F2B3I, where we up the number of units that you are, that would require a public hearing site plan review. The original, or as adopted, once you hit sixteen dwelling units, you go into public hearing site plan review in front of the UDC. We propose to amend that to thirty-one, so that between three and thirty dwelling units would be done, reviewed administratively by the staff. At thirty-one, you'd hit a public hearing site plan review. While there's not a really clear magic number, Mr. Davis and I did look at, and particularly him, we did look at different size developments and kind of get a sense of where they seem to be getting large enough, where the impacts seemed more appropriate, where there would be more community input opportunity, which would happen through a public hearing site plan review. So that was why we chose the numbers, or the threshold of thirty. The second amendment is at F2E1. Originally, this had taken a requirement, borrowed it from the PUD standards, which said that a minimum of thirty percent of the site shall be reserved as open space. But in our review of one of Mr. Robinson's developments, it became clear that because of the changes to the open space section, that this standard really was overkill. So, we proposed to remove it, but you may recall that there's been a reduction in the requirement of when you have to provide half your private open space as common to all units. And so we do propose that if you have thirty-one or more dwellings, you're really creating kind of a mini neighborhood, and at that point, it is appropriate to provide some common open space, some shared open space among the residences. And then the last section is just a clarification that if your development doesn't apply to the building spacing section in the other part of code, then you have a building spacing requirement here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McConnell. Any comments? Mr. Strike?
I'm confused by the last sentence in the addition language. The decision-making body may adjust the amount of open space required be common by up to ten percent. Where is the percentage as otherwise required that they're reducing it from?
So, the very first line at that page, for developments of thirty-one or more units, at least half of the private open space, so that would be fifty percent, so they could reduce it to forty or increase it to sixty.
Okay. We need a motion. What's the wish of the body? Mr. Spring?
I move to approve the staff changes in Section F.
Seceded by Mr. Robinson. Do you have any comments to make, Mr. Spring?
Oh, I think it makes the standards a little bit more realistic, and it makes sense that the larger, larger developments should have more scrutiny and perhaps more requirements regarding private open space, such as the staff mentioned, they're more of communities than they are just individual developments, and they do need some type of open space. And I think this is a good, a good standard.
Mr. Robinson?
I'll be supporting the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Please use your machines. That motion carried. Now, Ms. McConnell, I believe we are on Section 8 definitions on Page six of eight of the ordinance.
At last.
And I believe the only change is the last line of, on forty and forty-one, is that correct?
No, there's a second amendment on the, on Page seven of eight, lines nine through fourteen.
Okay, do you have any comment? Need to walk us through those?
Well, I think we've talked before, both today and in a previous meeting, about the issue of primary entrance versus primary front entrance, so I hope that's clear, although I'd be happy to answer any questions if it's not. Turning to street-facing building elevation, what had been adopted is basically any elevation of a building that is at right angles to a street or less would be considered street-facing, and this really doesn't make sense. So, we propose to reduce that angle to forty-five degrees or less, so if you're within forty-five degrees or less of the street, you are considered street-facing, a street-facing building elevation. But the other piece here in lines eleven through fourteen is a topographical exception, which was also amended into, amended into Exhibit C at the very bottom of the first page and the top of the second page. And it basically says that the portion, that if the grade plane of your structure is eight feet or more below the grade plane of the abutting sidewalk or edge of the street, if there is no sidewalk, then that portion of your building that is below the level of sidewalk or street does not count as being street-facing building elevation, and you don't have to make the design, you don't have to apply the design requirements to that portion of the building. And this is a language that we have seen in other communities and how they address a topographical issue. And the concept being that that portion that's that much below grade is not really what's interacting with the public right-of-way, the public realm.
Is average grade plane defined in the definitions?
There's a discussion in Chapter Six about how to calculate grade plane, but let me see what's defined. Grade is defined, and grade plane is defined, I think for average, you would just average it along that front edge.
Mr. Spinelli?
Yes, if the primary, if there, if the building's eight feet below the road, does that mean your primary entrance must be above on the second floor, say?
No.
Okay. What is the wish of the body on the, these two items? Mr. Robinson?
A move that we accept as proposed by staff.
Thank you. Mr. Cange? Do you second that? Do we have any discussion? Any discussions at all? Please use your machines. Okay, that has passed. We've been delinquent tonight on findings. Finding that on these changes tonight, particularly the landscaping one where we, in the design one where we ask for a guideline, I'd like to encourage the Assembly to provide funding so that that could get done in a timely manner, because we're taking a bunch of work that's been done, and we're now changing it, and that's not gonna happen overnight if we don't have the resources. So, as a finding, I'm asking that the Assembly make sure that they, encourage the Assembly to provide the resources to, so that that can get done in a timely manner. Seems to me we had one more item. Mr. Strike, is this a motion to adjourn? You're premature. What was the other item?
Mr. Chair, if I may, in the staff recommendation, at the very end on Page twenty-five of twenty-six, you recall that in original Exhibit C, there was a deletion to provide storage in multifamily developments. And I think staff testified that that was, you know, a result of testimony and discussion, but then on the, in the staff packet, they've amended what was previously a requirement to provide thirty square feet of storage per unit to, down to twenty-four square feet and six feet in height, and then a whole bunch of other criteria. So, that, I think, staff proposal could be in front of us.
Okay.
And I guess, you know, with that, I can, I can make a motion to accept that staff proposal.
Okay.
I'd like to speak to my motion.
You may, you may speak to your motion.
Because I need a second first.
We got a second?
I'm not gonna be supporting the motion. I think that you've heard me talk previously about multifamily storage. Currently, if you build multifamily in an elevated building, you're looking at two-hundred to two-hundred-and-twenty dollars per square foot of vertical construction costs. This provision is sort of, ignores the fact that there may be storage that's ample elsewhere in the units, for example. It ignores the fact that this is something that's often provided in the marketplace or is a factor in the cost of the actual units. In other words, you know, requiring this provision on a recent twenty-unit project required us to lose at least one unit, which has an effective impact on the other units in terms of what the rents are needed to support that. And I just think it hasn't been proven to me that the, the fear of not providing this requirement is something that causes a significant impact on surrounding properties, and to me, that is what should be driving the zoning code.
Mr. Spinelli, do you have any comments?
I would agree with what Mr. Robinson said, and that twenty-four square feet seems excessive.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to accept the staff's comments. This is on Page twenty-five of twenty-six and twenty-six. On that, what is the wish of the, or we got a motion, pardon me. Any further discussion? Further discussion? Please use your machines. Does anyone have anything else to come before the body?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
Ms. Domboski mentioned at the last Assembly Title 21 Committee that they had received an opinion from the Department of Law that there was no conflict with having two Planning and Zoning Commission members sit as ex officio members of that, of the Title 21 Committee.
I've got three members that have volunteered to serve on that committee, and I'll be passing that information on to Mr. Trainey tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Yeah, and if anyone has any other further findings on tonight's action, now would be a good time. Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, I would add, I mean, we've done, we've done a variety of actions over the course of, I think, two or three meetings at this point. I'd like the record to reflect that the original amendments that were brought forward were brought forward from staff related to conversations with people designing these projects under the new code in August of 2014, so a year ago. To some degree, they have been vetted through the Assembly Subcommittee prior to coming to us. I think some of our amendments here are intended to, you know, still uphold the intent of the code while providing flexibility, recognizing that development is challenging in our lot patterns, and frankly, multifamily development especially is one that is very difficult to pull off due to financial feasibility constraints, but also the layouts of our lots, you know, the existing lot patterns and subdivisions that we have. And I believe that by adding additional flexibility, we can encourage good development, but not hinder creativity.
Does anyone else have any findings to, they wish to add? Anyone else at all? Mr. Walker, is that a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
That dites for lack of a second, we'll keep on going. Seceded by Ms. Dean. No further action. We are adjourned.